Okay, our next work session is on the Stormwater Capital Plan, and I believe Jeff Schnabel is going to be presenting. We will reschedule the fire district. We'll be back in one moment. Okay, we're moving on to our next work session, which is the 2024 to 2029 Stormwater Capital Plan and Program Update. And Jeff Schnabel is here to present.
Great. Oh, am I a little too close? There we go. Good morning, Council. Sorry for the rush. We just zoomed in here. So it's good to see you. Thanks for having Clean Water up for a few minutes today to talk about the 2024 to 2029 Stormwater Capital Plan Program Update. For the record, I'm Jeff Schnabel with the Clean Water Division of Public Works, Stormwater Infrastructure Manager. And we can run to the next. So our goals for today, as I catch my breath. No action required by the Council today. This is simply an informational presentation about the capital plan. We'll come back to Council later in November to adopt, hopefully, the plan at a Council meeting. Our goals today then are just an overview of the 2024 to 2029 Stormwater Capital Plan. We'll go through a little bit of a permit overview as we typically do, county policies, goals, regulatory requirements that drive this, permit term, and 2023 capital recap real quickly. And then we'll talk a little bit about the upcoming plan, our priorities, project types, schedule, and some of our funding and grant opportunities. Next, please. So real quickly, the MPDS Phase 1 municipal stormwater permit is the primary driver behind our capital work and most of the work the Clean Water Division does. So that's driven by the Federal Clean Water Act under the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency. And they delegate authority to the State Department of Ecology to regulate discharges to waters of the state. And so we operate under a municipal stormwater permit issued by the state of Washington. That permit's updated every five years. The current permit began in August 2019 and is going to conclude this coming July in 2024. Our new permit will start in August. Permit compliance for the county is led by the Clean Water Division. We are supported by multiple divisions, multiple departments. There's numerous requirements and criteria that we need to meet to stay in compliance with that permit. On the right-hand side of the slide there, you can see some of the primary program components and requirements that we operate under. Today, we are going to focus on the stormwater capital projects and stormwater facility maintenance components. Those are the ones that drive our capital program. Let's go next. So the policies and goals driving this work. The policy, of course, is to meet the Phase 1 permit requirements for the county, keep us in compliance. While we're doing that, we have overall goals of protecting, enhancing our streams and wetlands within the county, minimizing stormwater impacts to receiving waters, and maximizing our public benefits that we can get from county-owned lands. The requirements specifically that drive us under the municipal stormwater permit, we've got the structural stormwater controls requirement, which is the one that actually requires us to have a capital program designed to prevent and reduce impacts to waters of the state from our discharges of stormwater. We also have some stormwater management planning requirements that go into this and sort of feed projects into the mix. And then our maintenance and operations requirements are fairly stringent as well. And we have a number of different requirements that we'd meet at different timelines. But the projects that you'll see here in our capital plan typically are going to be the larger, longer-term maintenance, kind of major maintenance projects that cost a little bit more money. And we put those into the capital plan instead of doing them under our ordinary maintenance. The other piece is the underground ejection control program, controlled by a separate Washington Administrative Code section. But we do comply with underground ejection control rules through our stormwater permit work. But we do have a couple of things there that are of note. One is that, or the main one, is that under that underground ejection control program, which is essentially dry wells, those are the structures that simply take water and inject it down into the groundwater. But of course, you have to have that water at a certain level of cleanliness before you can do that, right? So under that UIC regulation, if we have dry wells owned by the county that are posing a threat to groundwater because of lack of treatment or whatever else, we're required to retrofit or replace those units. So you will see some of that kind of work in our program as well. So I wanted to take just a minute to talk about this past permit term, since we are at the end of a full permit term and meeting those permit requirements for our structural stormwater controls. So this slide is just a quick overview of what projects we constructed or designed during the last permit term to comply with that regulation. So we had a short timeline. It was August 2019 to December 2022. So it was only three and a half years out of the five-year permit term that we had to acquire points essentially through an elaborate ecology-designed scoring system. And so as we build and design projects, we run them through a matrix and we figure out how many points we're scoring towards that requirement. And we have a requirement in its current permit to score 300 points under that method. 75 for complete projects, another 225 for projects that we designed. So what did we do to meet that? Well, we completed 10 construction projects, which scored us 74 points. We completed two property acquisitions where we leveraged money with the Legacy Lands program, helped them purchase properties. We got another 166 points there. We also get to score some points for our sweeping program. We do a lot of sweeping in Clark County. So there's a certain threshold above which, if we continue doing street sweeping, we can acquire points that we apply towards the permit compliance. So we scored a bunch of points there that we utilized in 2019. And then our four projects that we designed, up to 60% during that time period, scored another 226. So that got us easily above the requirement, which is nice. One of the nice things about that sweeping component, and I'll touch back on this a little later, is that having that buffer of sweeping points that we can score gives us a little bit more flexibility and a buffer so that we don't have to necessarily choose projects all the time just to score points, right? We want to build projects that are important to the county, that are hitting our priorities of where we want to do projects and the type of projects that are most beneficial here. So having those extra points gives us a little flexibility not to have to just chase points with a project, even though we don't necessarily like it that much, if that makes sense. So overall costs for that permit compliance, the design and construction of those 14 projects, about $2.5 million. Clean Water contributed almost $1 million to those two property acquisitions. But the overall county investment was about $3.25 million when you include the Legacy Lands monies. And then again, with sweeping, Clean Water provided about $250,000 of that money in 2019 out of a total sweeping effort of about 3/4 of $1 million for the county. So you can see where leveraging and utilizing some of the work done by other groups in the county is really helpful. The overall commitment in dollars to meet that permit requirement is around $6.5 million for the county over that three and a half years when you add all those up. All right, let's go next. So 2023, this current year, we had four projects in our construction phase. So we had two water quality projects, Mount Vista 8 Stormwater Facility, which is pictured there in the upper right, and another large project along Highway 99 between 68th and 78th Street, which is just finishing up this week, actually. We had one underground ejection control project out at Country Metals UIC. This one was done in conjunction with the big 99th Street project out there west of the landfill, or east of the landfill, sorry. So we were able to leverage that project as well and knocked out, I think, nine dry wells that were out of compliance out there, which brings us to a really nice number as far as our compliance. We're down to less than 10 of our dry wells in the county that are questionable as far as a threat to groundwater. We have close to 2,000 of those structures. And we started out a number of years ago with 45 or so of those that were out of compliance. And so we're down to less than 10 now. So we're happy to make some progress on that. And then we had one big repair project, kind of an expensive repair at a facility down on 119th Street. We had 11 projects in design phase. So we're ramping up for the next permit cycle, getting some projects into the pipeline and getting things lined up for grants. And then we have our planning activities, which is reforestation planning. We did some test plots this year out at Salmon Creek, all of this for a budget of about $1.6 million. All right, keep going. Next, please. All right. So then we'll move into the 2024 to 2029 plan, the new one. Just a couple of words about priorities. So these have not really changed in the last couple of years. We've been prioritizing water quality treatment projects, primarily in the Lower Salmon Creek tributaries. So you've got Cougar Creek, Suds Creek, those areas. We always prioritize required capital repairs. We always prioritize reforestation on our county lands. So we've got our separate county reforestation program as part of this capital work. And then we also, as mentioned already, the property acquisition for stormwater benefit. And those are those properties that we purchase in conjunction with Legacy Lands to kind of meet their goals. The project matrix this year, very limited changes compared to last year. So most of the projects are the same. We're just kind of running through the cycle. But what we did see is some budget and schedule adjustments since last year's adoption. Primarily, cost increases have been a factor, particularly over at Heritage Farm Wetland Restoration and then some of our treatment projects along Highway 99. And the reasons for those are kind of varied. In the Highway 99 corridor, we run into a lot of existing underground utilities and a lot of stuff. There's just a lot going on out there. And it's an important place to be retrofitting for stormwater, but it's also getting more expensive as it's hard to move these things and find these things. And Heritage Farm, of course, we've run into some challenging design, challenging permitting, as well as sewer line that goes through that property that increased the cost there that we'll have to move to do the wetlands. So that is about it on that. Thank you. So overall, 29 projects in this six-year plan, $13.6 million total projected. And here you can just see kind of the breakdown between the various project types that we do. And as usual, this focus on water quality as opposed to flow control, since we're in these urbanized areas, water quality is where we get the most bang for our buck, particularly Lower Salmon Creek and areas like that. So most of our investment is there. The hydrology segment is more flow control restoration. And most of the money in that category is for that Heritage Farm project out there to do the wetland restoration. We do have some habitat work there. It's a fairly good chunk, a few restoration projects, or reforestation projects, sorry. Property acquisition, we've allocated another $600,000 for additional cooperative purchases with Legacy. And then, of course, our capital repair is usually a pretty good chunk in that $0.5 million to $1 million range usually. Next, please. This is just a very generalized overall schedule. It's a little hard to read the numbers. But anywhere you see orange numbers, you can see where we have projects already in the pipeline and there's been dollars expended on them during 2023. And you can see there's a lot of them that actually have an orange number, which means there are a lot of projects in the pipeline, which is a good thing. And then the blue numbers are the funding remaining that is programmed in 2024 to 2029. So the main purpose of this slide is just to kind of show how these six-year plans lay out. You can see that there's substantially more activity in the early years of each six-year plan because we have a little bit more dialed-in idea what we're doing, what the projects are, how much they're going to cost. As you run out into the out years, you can see less going on. And that's primarily because we just don't have that program very tightly at this point. So we just continually move along each year and bump that out. Next, please. So overall funding, 2023 Clean Water adopted budget was $9 million. That's for the entire Clean Water Division, not just for capital. And you can see capital in 2023 was 19%, the second-largest category. Maintenance and operations almost always is our largest expenditure, approaching 40% of our annual budget. And then just to note that that annual capital spending will vary substantially from year to year, depending on how much, whether we're in a design-heavy year or a construction-heavy year. So that varies quite a bit as a percentage of the overall budget. Next, please. I already mentioned leveraging. And one way we do that, of course, is the property acquisitions. So I won't chat about that too much more. We also leverage our own county properties for reforestation. So typically, it's easier to do reforestation projects on land that the county already owns. And our goal over the past six years has been to reforest 30 acres of county property. And we just met that goal this year. So we have kind of hit that first inflection point of our new reforestation program. So that was the first kind of series of it. So this next year, we'll be looking at where we go next and how many acres do we want to try to bite off. So that's encouraging that we were able to do that much. Obviously, the Heritage Farm Wetlands Restoration is a big project for us. That gets us both capital credit and also helps out parks with the Farm Master Plan. Can we do that without hitting any general fund dollars? Because we're bringing in some grant dollars, some clean water dollars, and helps out that way. And then ongoing coordination with the County Roads Program. Whenever they are doing projects, we're always looking to see if there are places that we can throw in a few retrofits or leverage those projects together. We have one right now up on North Highway 99. That's going to be done in conjunction with, I believe it's a sidewalk improvement project up there. Next, please. So a little more about funding, the grants end of our funding. We currently have two projects in this current plan or in the new plan that are funded by grants, $650,000 total. If you look, well, let's see where we go next. Let's go to current and future proposals. This October, just last month, or earlier this month, I guess, we submitted another construction grant for $500,000 additional dollars for Heritage Farm, as well as applying for some loan funding, $3 million worth on that same project. So the only proposals that we put in this year were having to do with Heritage Farm. However, in the next several years, we are looking at at least seven construction project proposals that we hope to submit between '24 and '26. Some of those projects that I mentioned are currently in the design phase. As they come through to the point where we can apply for grant funding, we will do so. We're hoping to be in the neighborhood of $3.5 million of grant money there. As far as overall program life from 2011 to 2023, there's just an updated graphic of the percentage of Clean Water Fund versus state grants and state proviso money for capital projects. So you can see in total, 70-plus percent is Clean Water Fund. But we do have approaching 30%, 28%, I guess, at this point. That is either state grant or state proviso funded. So we're happy about that, but looking to kind of keep looking for those opportunities anytime we can get them. Next, please. All right, last slide. Just a quick look ahead for 2024, and a couple of things I touched on a little bit. But we do have our new municipal stormwater permit coming out in August. We currently have in hand the draft of that permit. So we are evaluating impacts to the Clean Water Program and Division that will come from that permitting implementation. One of the things that is substantially changing in our capital world is the increased point requirement. So it'll go from that 300-point requirement up to 750 points that we will need to score. The good thing is that they have changed the way points are calculated. In some ways, that's a very good thing because they're giving us some more credit for some of the types of projects that we like to do. So we'll be able to score more points on those. In some ways, it's not so good. They're changing the way sweeping credits that I mentioned earlier. We won't be able to grab as many of those credits for sweeping because for the first time in its history now, the actual municipal stormwater permit will require a minimum level of street sweeping as part of a permit requirement under that. So the county's already done, we've done sweeping for years and years, of course. Now we will have a requirement to a certain minimum amount just to meet the MPDS permit requirements. And beyond that, we will still be able to score some capital points, but it won't be quite as substantial. So one thing we're doing is working on evaluating those impacts and doing some calculations based on this new capital plan to see exactly how many points we have in our plan, to see how much flexibility we're going to have this time around. We're going to resume, pardon me, we're going to resume our sub-basin retrofit planning. We took a year off of that due to some staffing limitations and turnover. So we'll be looking to support some of the lake and watershed plan implementation, the Lower Salmon Creek watershed, maybe in the Lackamasque watershed as well. There's some attention being paid out there these days, as we know. So we'll try to do some focused planning to see where we can best allocate dollars to help those efforts. And then our reforestation program planning, I mentioned earlier, will develop our next planting target and some potential locations for that this year. And then lastly, or second to lastly, asset management. We are working with maintenance and operations to develop a pipe inspection program that will be a little bit more proactive as far as taking care of and examining some of our pipe assets particularly, which have not really been inspected in the past. They're sort of out of sight, out of mind type of thing. And so we're really looking at doing some holistic inspection over the next number of years of our pipe system and see how that impacts what we need to be replacing or upgrading or refurbishing. And then just capital repair and replacement projections to see how about our aging infrastructure in general, what we might need to be doing, and how we might need to be planning forward to start replacing some of this infrastructure as it starts to age out. Part of that is resuming our long-term capital planning as well, which some of you are probably familiar with. We did a kind of a first shot at it back in 2019, I think. And so it's kind of been tabled since then. But we would like to bring that back out and get a little bit more detailed and think a little bit more long-term about where we're going with the stormwater program as far as capital planning and capital work. We'll try to get back into that this year as well. I think that's all I have. Hopefully, that made some sense. I think I blasted through it pretty quickly. But if there are questions?
You did blast through it. But I think we've been holding our questions to the end and let you go on a roll there. So thanks very much for all of this work. I would like to thank you, too, for the work that you put in in organizing the Lackamasque Lake Forum. I was only able to attend the morning sessions, but it was very good and I think great to bring everyone together to talk about that and really understand the underlying water quality issues best, good to be informed. And with that, I'll turn to my fellow councilors if they have any questions or comments that you'd like to make.
Thank you, Councilor Marshall. Jeff, just curious, how are the Salmon Creek Tributary projects prioritized?
That's a great question. So when we got back into capital planning a number of years ago, we had done kind of a major effort all the way back in the early, mid-2000s and 2010s to kind of go countywide and look for some opportunities at various places in the county to do capital work. One thing that kind of arose from that and has kind of continued is that, one, the Lower Salmon Creek area is where we tend to have the most development in the county. So there's some really heavily developed areas. And what jumps out when you start looking there is that there's a large area of that watershed that really has almost no stormwater treatment. It was developed long enough ago that the regulations either were not in place or they were very different than they are now. So we have a lot of acres out there that are essentially just sending untreated stormwater into the tributaries there in Lower Salmon Creek. So looking at that and looking at kind of where we could best spend our dollars with salmon recovery for Salmon Creek, and then we have the lakes downstream or the lake downstream, that just kind of leaped out as an area to start this planning effort back up. And so we did a number of rounds in the Lower Salmon Creek, kind of Cougar Creek, Suds Creek, 114th Street tributary areas. And that yielded a bunch of needs and a bunch of projects that we just decided to launch on. And they fit in well with meeting the permit requirements over this last permit. Did that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
Okay, yep.
I've got a couple of questions. Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, could you please give a bit of a description of the origins of the Clean Water Fund and its amount relative to the work that's needed to be done?
Well, the origins of the Clean Water Fund were back in 2000, I believe, is when the first Clean Water fee went out. And that was in response to decisions by the Department of Ecology that said we needed to do more stormwater work in the county. And so there needed to be a funding source at that time. I think it was in the late '90s when the work was done to kind of come up with the first fee structure and the fee levels. Is that, Councilor, is that kind of where you're wanting to start?
Yeah, I was looking at more, what is the source of the funds?
Oh, right, yes. I was going to say, we might call on Devin Rossfer, who's our Clean Water Division Manager, and/or Priya, if either of them want to talk in more detail about the fee.
Devin Rossfer, for the record. Hi, Councilor Young. It was good to see you last week at the Lackamasque Symposium, and most of you were there. I think all of you were there, actually. Thank you for coming. So the Clean Water fee, I can't say that I know when it started, 2000, according to Jeff. But the Clean Water fee is primarily collected through ratepayers in Clark County. And it's assessed twice a year. And it is, as you can see on the slide, it is 72% of our funding source. And right now, the fee is assessed at a rate of $47 per 3,500 square feet of impervious surface. So it is based on hard surfaces, which generate stormwater runoff. And everyone in the county receives that fee through their tax assessments, which are sent out in April and October.
Thank you.
And we do have the lowest fee in Washington State at this time.
That is good to hear. And I think we had this conversation offline a little bit. But I kind of want to look at the idea of, because honestly, a lot of our stormwater is being contributed by housing that does not have its own onsite treatment facilities. And they're currently, I mean, when we charge everybody, regardless of whether they are mitigating onsite or not, it creates a disincentive actually for them to mitigate onsite, to make that investment. So I'm curious if we have put any thought into some sort of an incentive for people to develop that onsite mitigation.
That's a great question. And there are a lot of programs across the United States that do allow private property owners to implement stormwater facilities and have their fee reduced based on the amount of flow that they're controlling on their property. I will just say that in your council time later today, we have requested a work session to talk about our Clean Water Division's desire to do a Clean Water rate study to comprehensively look at the rate that we are currently charging and look at our future needs and our compliance, risks, and opportunities since we are getting a new permit and we are updating our Stormwater Management Manual and taking a full look of where we're at and where we may need to be in the future. And so I'm happy to continue asking questions. But I also know that it's on council time later today. And we have requested a full work session to talk about the Clean Water rate study and bring in our additional subject matter experts. Andrea Logue on our team is our Clean Water Fee expert. And she's not here today, unfortunately, but would be able to bring a lot to this discussion at a future work session.
Great, thank you for that. And then my next question, oh, I just completely lost my train of thought. I don't know. Sue, go ahead and then check back with me, see if I remember what my question was.
Okay, yeah, just jump in if it comes back to you so we don't lose it again. I have a few things that I wanted to ask. I'd like to really better understand this in terms of water quality because I know with the Clean Water Act, it's an iterative process. And each renewal of the permit, there's a greater expectation. Could you talk about, like, what are the parameters, the water quality?
So primarily when, when we talk about stormwater BMPs or best management practices that are put in place to deal with water quality, the, the goal of those practices and those pieces of infrastructure is to remove suspended solids from the water, right? And associated with those suspended solids can be all kinds of things, including metals, nutrients. Have some of our issues with eutrophication in lakes and harmful algal blooms, those types of things. And so those technologies are catching up. And we also can, in some places, like in the Lacamas watershed, for instance, there are further regulations that are put in place that specifically require phosphorus removal BMPs to be installed when new development takes place. So when we are looking at our water quality monitoring, we kind of look, as, as we talked about at the symposium last week a little bit, right? We're looking at kind of a full range of potential pollutants that go into the water via stormwater. And those are, again, all the way from nutrients to metals to bacteria and others. So that, that is one of the nice things about some of these retrofit opportunities that we try to pursue is that we now have better technologies to apply that don't just target the sediment, but also some specific removal of phosphorus or metals, those kind of things. I'm not sure if I'm getting entirely at your question, Councilor, but.
Well, you're, you're going into areas I'm interested in, so it's all good. But so, and so have we improved over time? You know, because I know there's more impervious service that is being laid down every day. So are we staying, making improvements? Are we kind of staying the same? What's just generally the status? Without going into too much data.
Sure, generally speaking, we, we still see a degradation in water quality as development occurs. Even with the best technology, we do see some degradation. And that's why the technology keeps advancing. That's why the regulations keep changing, to try to chase after that better result, right? However, as we look, and again, as we saw a little bit in, in the presentations last week, when we look at some of the areas that have kind of poor water quality in some of these long ago developed areas, we are absolutely seeing some improvement. So they may still be kind of poor water quality, but they're less poor than they were. They are improving in a number of cases or in, or in particular pollutant types, right? The overall water quality may not be necessarily getting a lot better, but perhaps we've improved the bacteria situation or we've improved the nutrient situation, right? So the, you, you would have to do a little bit of a deep dive to see where those changes are. But yes, we, we feel like, you know, not, not certainly just what the county does or what the clean water program does, but what, you know, our regional partners and our local partners and all of these efforts that are going on. We do think they have an impact and partly to improve and partly to protect against degradation, so.
And thank you for that. The underground injection systems, are we, are we still permitting those? Are we starting to stay away from those? And it sounds like you've made some good headway in replacing some that were questionable?
Yeah, yes, they are still allowable. They're, they're a legitimate practice. There are, again, changing regulations with that. So the, the biggest thing with the drywells is you have to do one of two things. Either you have to have enough space below the bottom of the drywell that's just soil of a certain type that can provide treatment to the stormwater when it goes in, before it gets to groundwater, or you have to treat it before you put it into the drywell. So one way or the other, you have to have treatment. And so as long as that's okay, as long as that's done, the Department of Ecology tracks those and registers all those new, new drywells that are put in by developers or the county or whoever's building them. So they're all registered and tracked and they all have to meet those requirements.
And do we, do we monitor those or is it self-monitoring?
They're, they're self, well, they're not really monitored per se. There's a, there's an assumption that if you put them in following these regulations and these rules, that they will protect water quality adequately. If you can't prove those things through your design, then you would have to actually do specific sampling of the water quality going into that drywell in order to prove to the state that it's not causing harm. Does that make sense?
Yep. And I would just add that any groundwater quality is under the jurisdiction of the Department of Health at the state level and really falls under the Safe Drinking Water Act. So there is like an exchange of jurisdiction and responsibilities. We'll monitor the stormwater runoff entering the UIC, but any potential contamination into the groundwater would be within the drinking, Safe Drinking Water Act and any drinking water purveyors.
Thanks, thanks for that. I know we've got our Troutdale aquifer that we rely on, so folks are concerned about that. And related to the private stormwater facilities, I know that was an issue when I was on the Clean Water Commission, that often people may move, they, a homeowners association may not know that they're responsible for the maintenance of the stormwater facility. And so how, how's that going? I think we, there was additional staff that was coming on to help monitor that. Is that, that going well?
So currently we have two staff within Clean Water Division whose primary role is to work directly with HOAs and private facility owners to provide them with technical assistance. And what I have found is that they are rock stars and they go and they knock on doors. They track down HOA owners. They'll get neighbors together and, and tell them why they need to all work together and co-invest into private facilities. So they really do a lot of technical assistance work and spend a lot of time forming relationships in order to, to get the outcomes that we need for private stormwater facilities. They have a lot of work. To, you know, the, two staff primarily covering the county, but we are, we have requested an additional full-time employee to add our capacity for private stormwater facility inspections. And that's a continued ask that we'll, we'll pursue regardless of the outcomes from our upcoming budget request. So they're doing a great job. We are in compliance, but as you know, we continue, I think we're growing at a rate of 8%. I, I don't have the number right in front of me. So we do expect that.
There's a lot of them.
We'll need more staff over time as more private facilities get installed in the county.
Great. And I didn't see it in here, but one thing I've been concerned about is construction stormwater and impact to streams and level of monitoring and enforcement and whatever education might be needed to developers who are having an impact on streams. So I traveled down 179, so I've seen a good deal of it and a lot of sediment. And I, without it, Gee Creek, I know it may not be a priority of yours, but there's really, over the last couple decades, just a couple feet of sediment at, as it is, meets the Columbia River. So just seems like there's a lot more needed in terms of, you know, education, monitoring, and then ultimately enforcement. That could, could happen hopefully quickly so that practices can be put in place so that you're not, there's not a continued impact. I say that as there's a atmospheric river headed our way that, that, you know, I look at these, you know, they got to button up these construction sites. Any comments on that?
I would just add that it's funny you bring that up because I had a chance, I, this morning, I met with the full group within our engineering and construction team. And I got a chance to meet all of our staff that are responsible for construction stormwater. And they were talking about the rain that's coming and needing to get out there ahead of the weekend to make sure that all the sites looked, looked like they were unlikely to cause pollutant loading. I have asked for them to take me on ride-alongs and show me sites that look good and show me where they have challenges. And I'm committed to, to working with them to understanding where they have constraints and where they see opportunities for, for improvement. So it's something that we're forming that relationship and we continue to monitor. And I'm just happy you brought it up because I had a really good meeting with them this morning.
That's, that's great. And I'm just wondering if there's a capacity issue there because there's a whole lot of construction that is going on. And we need those houses, but, and, and it can be done in a way that isn't impactful. So that'd be the best world.
And I will put that on my list to talk with them about.
Councilor Young, did you remember what you wanted to ask?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I, I was curious, so when we talk about the point system that we have, I know from personal experience that when you, when you give points for certain activities and you have a certain requirement level that you need to achieve, that some of the common sense and some of the real priorities kind of go to the side. And your, your, the direction you go is, is essentially steered by the, you know, the, by the numbers process, the, the point system. And I was curious if you see that happening, like sometimes like in your gut, you know, certain activities would be more beneficial, but you're stuck trying to hit that number. And so you go with the activities that will get you the points?
Right, great, great question, great thought, Councilor. And, and yeah, that is, that's kind of what I was alluding to earlier, where our, our goal is, is always to have a, a list and a, and a palette of, of good projects that the county wants to do, that are sufficient, kind of no matter what happens with any kind of a point system or a requirement system put in place by ecology, that we're able to pivot and, and provide projects and build projects that will still meet those requirements, but are also projects that we really want to do anyway, right? And so so far, we've been really successful with that. I don't, I don't have that sort of, you know, gut feeling that we're, we're like building stuff that we would rather not build. That hasn't happened of late. I think many years ago, we, we had some challenges with that kind of thing. Maybe built some projects that weren't terribly high priority just because we needed to, you know, meet a, meet a target. But in the last, you know, 10 years, I don't believe that's been the case. And I don't see that happening. I think, I think Ecology is aware that they need to be sort of giving some deference to the permatees and the locals to know where the best bang for the buck can be had. And so I think they are, are willing to kind of work with us on those point totals and make sure that we're able to do the things that we need to do. Does that help at all?
Councilor Young, are you still there?
Oops, I got my, my mute backwards there. Yes, that does answer my question perfectly. Thank you very much.
Great. Is there anything else from anyone? Anything you'd like to add? You're good. Great. Well, thanks very much for all of your work. This is very, very important.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and, and I guess with that, we are concluding our work session. And thanks to all the staff for their hard work. Thank you.